All right, we are broadcasting now.
Guess I should start my video since we're broadcasting. So Jim, can you hear me?
I most certainly can.
Have you, I'm sure that you're, you're pretty experienced already with these little Logitech cams, the one that you, the one that you gave me to use here?
I am.
Is there a way to zoom it in and out at all? Or is that something that we haven't?
We don't have, I haven't played with it at all inside of Zoom. I don't believe there is.
There is.
If you were using Logitech software, you probably could.
Okay, and I figured as much, yeah, I just figured Zoom was probably limited as far as that. It's not too bad now, but sometimes, I think if I get close, they're really good cameras.
For what?
They'll give you more, a more deal on it.
Are you going to participate, Charlie?
No, I might not be in town.
I'm going to come back from Amalia for the day because I want to be around for the, for the other thing. Are you guys going to attend that?
Okay, council, it is seven o'clock and I am going to call this meeting to order. Can we please have everyone stand for the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, of God. Physical, liberty and justice for all. Thank you, council. Ms. Martinez, will you please take the role?
Yes, sir. Mayor Coleman.
Here.
Counselor Daniel.
Here.
Counselor Veho.
Here.
Counselor Carson.
Here.
Counselor Broyles.
Here.
Counselor Griego.
Present.
All counselors present except for Counselor Hensley, who previously requested to be excused. And a quorum has been declared.
Thank you. Up next, we have the agenda approval. I don't see any hands raised, so if anyone would like to make a motion, I'll recognize.
I'll make a motion through. I'll flag it.
Okay. A second. Any further discussion? Okay, Ms. Martinez, will you take the vote?
Yes, sir. Counselor Griego.
Yes.
Counselor Broyles.
Yes.
Counselor Veho.
Yes.
Mayor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Carson.
Yes.
Counselor Daniel. Yes. The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. The next item is our citizen comment. This is the section of the agenda to where we allow citizens to make comments within a three-minute time period. We do ask you to make sure that you finish your comments within three minutes. If you are still talking at the three-minute mark, I will politely ask you to end the conversation so we can move on to the next person. Okay, Ms. Martinez, do we have anyone in queue set up to make comments?
No, sir, I did not receive any comment cards. There is a couple people who just raised their hand to talk. I have Lauren Sonderreger and Chris Steinberg wishing to speak.
Okay, so who's the first person?
Well, they're on the call together.
Okay.
I'll bring them in.
Okay.
Hello, good evening. Hi, I'm not sure if you can see us, but we are Lauren Sonderreger and Chris Steinberg. We are two family physicians from Valleywide Health Systems. We work with a range of people of all ages and different stages of life. And we are here tonight to discuss with you our strong concern about the rate of transmission of COVID-19 in our community and how we think that mask wearing and having the city mandate mask wearing in public places could be really beneficial in reducing transmission. So we do know that pre-symptomatic, so before people are actually sick, and asymptomatic transmission of COVID-19 is actually mostly how we spread it to each other through loud talking or laughing. There's been a lot of academic research, including recent June 2020 studies, meta-analyses from journals such as The Lancet, proving that if we physically distance as well as use masks, including multi-layer cloth masks in public, we can reduce transmission of COVID-19 by eighty to eighty-five percent. And we also know that that's not just in healthcare settings that we work in, but in the grocery store, in barber shops, in restaurants, and that in healthcare and non-healthcare community settings, they've been proven to be effective in multiple settings, so.
And hi, this is Chris Steinberg. I'm also a family physician with Valleywide Health Services. Certainly, COVID is increasingly spreading throughout the San Luis Valley, and that's going to be more dramatic as we are having folks travel through the valley. You've noticed all the motorhomes traveling through. This is the safe way to go on vacation, but it may not be great for us. So we're hoping that we can encourage everybody who's coming through and staying and also living here to feel that they need to wear masks when they're in public. We are a low-resource area where people have many health comorbidities. And as you know, people with health comorbidities are more likely to die from COVID. Prevention of the disease is primarily the important thing we need to do. We call on the city counselor and city council to bring forth a motion to make mask wearing required in public. There are many other Colorado cities and counties requiring masks in public, as does the entire state of New Mexico. We thank you very much for your attention at this time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for your comments. Okay, Ms. Martinez, do we have anyone else? Can you just give instructions again on what it takes to, for they to be recognized? So we could bring them in if there are other people on the call? Or do you not see any other people?
There's other people in there. None have their hand raised, but if you would like to raise your hand, there should be a raise-hand feature in the right bottom-hand corner of your screen. If you're on the telephone dial star nine, it'll, it'll raise your hand for you.
Okay, so we don't see anyone raising their hand.
Oh, I just got one, Shanae Diaz.
Okay, go ahead, will you let her in?
Yep.
Hey, guys, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes.
Sorry, I had trouble finding the link tonight. I apologize. So my only, my only comment is to say thank you. Last Friday, I called, I called up Heather and I asked her for a dumpster for a river cleanup. And not only did she say yes, but within like eight hours, there was a dumpster placed over by the river and we were able to organize a pretty awesome cleanup that was completely led and run by folks who live along the river. And I thought it was a pretty, pretty great weekend. We wheelbarrowed and truck-loaded out as much trash as we could, so the trails look a lot better kind of in the area that folks refer to as Devil's Playground out along the railroad area. But I just wanted to say thank you so much. That is awesome. Thanks, Heather.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. So I don't see any other hands raised, so I will now turn it over. Holly, did someone just raise their hand again?
No.
Okay, all right. So now I will turn it over to Ms. Brooks for a follow-up.
Hey, I have a question, guys. Is that shade moving in your image? Is it pixelating? Because it's really bothering me behind me.
Mine's fixed.
Okay, looks okay, Carson.
All right.
Ms. Brooks, I'll turn it over to you for a follow-up.
Sorry, guys, this is, this is Heather, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, because my, my computer just went black. So I'll talk and then figure this out after I talk. I do believe council has gotten a few calls from some residents related to the face masks, and that might be something under council communication at the end of the agenda you might want to discuss further. In regards to Shanae's comment, I was just excited to get the call. We, it's amazing, the work and the coordination that went on, and I think it was a great community effort, the community that lives along the river, to, to pull together and, and to do some of that work. And obviously, if, if they're working to clean it up, we want to try to make it as, as easy as possible too. And so thank you to our sanitation crews for helping to get that dumpster out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Appreciate that. Next item on the agenda is ceremonial items. Arbor proclamation and Alamo Thirty-Year Tree City USA recognition. Counselor Hensley is on the tree board and Counselor Daniel is an alternate. Normally, I try to do my best to have the council members who are on these special boards to read the proclamation whenever possible. Unfortunately, Counselor Hensley is not here today, so tonight I ask Counselor Daniel to read the proclamation for us tonight. Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, mayor. And I did just want to say thank you to Dr. Steinberg and Dr. Sonderreger for speaking today. I'm excited to have our council conversation later about what that could look like. So the Arbor Day Foundation has the Arbor Week Proclamation 2020, whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees and planted more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Week is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees in Alamosa increase property value, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, and trees wherever they are planted are a source of joy and renewal, and whereas Alamosa has been recognized as a Tree City USA for the thirtieth year by the National Arbor Foundation and has a strong desire to continue its tree planting and maintenance ways. Now, therefore, the city council of the city of Alamosa do hereby proclaim July 6th through July 12th Arbor Week in the city of Alamosa, and we recommend all citizens celebrate Arbor Week and support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant and maintain trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations dated this first day of July 2020.
Thank you very much, Counselor Daniel. So I believe later on in the agenda, we're going to also have a presentation from an outside agency, but, but at this time, we'll go ahead and continue to move forward with the rest of the agenda. The next item. Well, I'll tell you what. So Ms. Martinez, do we have anyone here for the Arbor Day Week Proclamation? Anyone on the call or on the Zoom?
We do. We have Adam Moore.
Okay.
And Megan Dudley, who are on the tree board. And of course, Andy there too.
Do we want to have them talk now? Or do we want to just wait till we get to that part on the agenda? Because I believe they're the same ones who are giving the presentation, right?
Right.
Okay, so we'll. How, how about we move past consent calendar A and then we'll have the presentation from the outside agency and then allow them to talk? Okay, everybody? All right, so the next item is consent calendar A. At this time, I would accept a motion from council member who would like to make a motion that we pass it.
I'll make a motion that we pass consent calendar A.
Second.
Okay, I see Counselor Daniel, you have your hand raised. Do you have any comments?
That was just to make the motion, mayor, sorry.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any further discussion? If not, Ms. Martinez, will you please take the vote?
Yep. Counselor Griego.
Yes.
Counselor Broyles.
Yes.
Counselor Carson. Here, I mean. Counselor.
Yes.
Counselor Daniel.
Yes.
Counselor Veho.
Yes.
Mayor Coleman.
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. So now we'll move on down to regular business. We have a presentation from outside agency, the Tree Board Annual City Council Report. Ms. Martinez, would you introduce our guests again, please?
Yes, we have Adam Moore and Megan Dudley. And I'm going to stop sharing my screen so Adam can share his.
Okay, is my screen showing up?
Yes.
Okay. Give me a second here. Hopefully, it goes from slide to slide as well. Sometimes I have difficulty with that despite having done these Zoom meetings for months now. So once again, congratulations for thirty years on, with Alamosa as a Tree City USA. I believe from the tree board, our presence will also introduce the other members as we move along. This first slide here is just a little anniversary, little flyer that was put together by Megan that shows various planting projects associated with the city over the years. If you feel like printing it and posting it places, that'd be great to show the thirtieth anniversary endeavor. And. I'm gonna. Sorry, I'm trying to. I think you have a copy of this, Holly. Would you mind running through this? Because it is not progressing on my slide, on my screen.
Okay.
You want me to stop sharing?
Yeah, Andy, did you send me that? Or do you have a copy? Maybe you can share it.
It was attached to the agenda. I'm not, I don't think I sent it to you separately.
On the agenda, let me just pull it up.
While we're waiting, I'd like to tell council that Megan and Adam are co-chairs of our tree board, and I couldn't ask for better leadership on the tree board. It seems like we're calling Adam every other day with the tree issue of how is this? What should we do with it? What? He's always there for us. He's, he's really helped our city out. And Megan's a professor at Adams and has answered several important questions as well. And I'm just proud to serve with them on the tree board.
All right, so I've got it shared. Just let me know when to scroll down.
Scroll down, please. All right, that's good. So once again, just a reminder of some of the benefits of having trees in an urban setting such as Alamosa. I think the biggest benefit here is, is the quality of life. Everybody likes to hang out in the shade. Everybody likes to see a nice tree-lined street, likes to see places aesthetically pleasing. That's why there's more people living in the city of Alamosa than out in the county of Alamosa, I think, is because of the benefits and the trees we have here in town and that, that positive influence that it provides and henceforth that increase in the desirability to live here within the city limits. And then, of course, there's, there's always the benefit of increased property value and numerous studies that show how it increases both the residential property value and brings business to business districts that have trees as well. Next slide, please. All right, so this is, isn't just something that magically happens each year. This is an effort that's jointly put together between Andy Rice, spearheading the online renewal process, where he has to upload various documents and, and forms that show that we actually did the requirements each year. And then you can see over on the other slide, there is Mayor Ty Coleman has to sign the form as well to send up into there. So it's a joint effort between various city folks and the tree board to make sure this is maintained each year. Next, please. And just an idea of where the city of Alamosa fits within the picture of Colorado. There's only ninety-five Tree City USAs within Colorado, so having Alamosa as one of them is a very strong point of pride, I think, for the city that they've been able to maintain it for all these years. And there's all sorts of nice other facts here with the benefits it provides to the citizens throughout the entire state. And then additional information in regards to that thirty-year milestone. So that previous slide said ninety-five, because that's a year back. So that was 2018 statistics. In 2019, there was ninety-six Tree City USA. So communities sometimes don't meet all the requirements each year and may fall out for a year or two and then get back in. So of those ninety-six Tree City USAs, there's on average five that don't make it each year, so we can have up to a hundred, actually. But fifty-five of those, so a majority of them have been doing it less time than Alamosa have. But on the other hand, forty of them have more years of Tree City USA as Alamosa. So what that tells me is, is we need to keep at it each year and make sure that we're, we're pushing ahead so that eventually we can get ahead of more of those communities around the state. Next slide, please. So this is an overview of the different requirements to maintain the Tree City USA status. So these are the standards. And then what we're going to do is we're going to roll through each of these standards and just give a relation to how that is in the city of Alamosa. So next slide, please. All right, so the standard one is having the tree board or department. And Alamosa has decided, as we know, to go with a, a tree board. And this is where all the current members are that we happen to have. So myself presenting, Megan Dudley as well on the call. And we also have Kevin Ruball, who represents ASU. And I also happen to represent the Colorado State Forest Service, hence our logo up in the corner of this slide. Marilyn Lozer as well, and then of course Liz Hensley, Andy Rice. And then we also have, since Andy took over, he's been very good at incorporating parks and rec staff. So we have Jeremy that regularly attends the tree board meetings as well. And one thing to take note of is we feel like geographically, we're spread out throughout town, except unfortunately, if you look at this, we all happen to be in the same ward. And so that tells me is, is we are actively trying to recruit and get new members on the tree board, but we could definitely take the help of city councilors to recruit people within their ward so that we're not biasing a particular part of the town.
Good job, Charlie.
Yeah, that, it's good that they're out of my ward.
All right, so standard two is the tree care ordinance. And so this is, isn't all the tree care ordinances that the city has, but just a couple I wanted to highlight. So we have the Resolution 43, which from 2008 established the tree board. And so that gets uploaded each year to meet that requirement, to show that we have that established. And then in some of the, the new ordinances that were revised a few years ago, there's some that have maintenance standards in there in regards to how the trees need to be maintained and taken care of. And then next one with parking lots, and that's something that I know we've talked about. And we might be looking out a little bit further, but that's the number of trees per parking space that should be required for, for new parking lots that are established. And the reason behind that being that more shade and keeping it cooler and making it more appealing for people that want to come to the businesses. And then fourteen fifty-five is the nuisance slash hazardous trees and shrubs. And that's where the, the pruning of the trees over the sidewalks and the streets falls within that as well. And that's, that was a new addition a few years ago. And it's something that perhaps needs a little more education with the public on, simply because with more people walking about as a form of exercises, they do have more of an opportunity to run into branches that are overhanging sidewalks. All right, next slide, please. So once again, that annual budget of $2 per capita, so approximately twenty thousand for the city of Alamosa, as we know. And this isn't all the numbers for Alamosa, but this is a highlight of some of the numbers from last year. So we can see the big number being in planting. A large portion of that was two grants last year. One was $6,000 associated with trees for the entrance to the cemetery, and the other was $1,500 for additional plantings around town. And then the tree care is a reflection of some of the salary that parks and rec staff have for taking care of the trees. So the pruning, the watering, the planting, that they, their salaries go towards with it. And then the twenty-nine seventy-five, that's, for some reason, I missed the dollar sign there. That's the volunteer rate associated with the amount of time that the tree board spends on the meeting, working on other projects associated with the tree board. And then the, a few, some memberships in the Colorado Tree Coalition, which is useful for the, for getting the grant, some of the grants the city gets, and then additional expenses for supplies and equipment, some pruning supplies, a lot of that for drip irrigation to keep the waters, the trees nice and watered. Next. All right, so the proclamation, which this is from last year, and obviously, we just heard the proclamation from, from this year. But that's the simple requirement. But as you can see, it needs to be approved and we'll upload that, the one from this year come about November or December. Next, please. And then each year, we have to have the Arbor Day observance, which is, this year, there happened to be an exception. We don't have to do it because of decreasing the chances of spread, of course, of with COVID and, and just larger group settings. But we did do a planting last year to meet that requirement, and this is just a flyer for last year on advertising the event. Next. And this is just another example of that Arbor Day observance and how it was covered in the Valley Carrier. All right. Yep, we can move on to the accomplishments. Thank you. So last year, in 2019, forty-four trees were planted. We removed eighteen, unfortunately, but we still had a net increase in trees. And then the parks and rec staff kindly pruned approximately two-hundred-and-nineteen trees. I'm sure there's a few more that they missed counting in there. And then there was approximately ten volunteers at the various planting events that we had over the year. All right, next. And then just some other accomplishments and work we've been doing with the city is, as you know, with the article in the paper and the discussions, is helping look at the spruce trees in the cemetery that needed to be pruned for the airport, looking at a few trees in various spots throughout town for Republic's Works, and of course, giving advice to homeowners on species selection. So a large part of that is Marilyn Lozer with the website that she runs and people that contact her via that for advice. Providing sick tree calls, so giving, getting an idea of what's affecting the trees in town and what the citizens can do to keep their trees healthy. And then working on, we're working on this project with the city where we'll have some money that can be used towards a, as a matching, basically, grant program for citizens to plant trees in the public right of way, so between the sidewalk and the street. And we're hoping to have everything lined up and ready to kick that off next year. And next, please. And next, please. So once again, congratulations to the city of Alamosa with all their efforts in the Tree City USA and keeping along with it each year. And let's see, I think the next one's, yep, just kind of a generic if you have any questions. So I guess, Andy or Megan, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I think you pretty well covered it, Adam. We'll continue our costure program hopefully next year.
Megan and Adam, thank you so much for your presentation. And Andy, also thank you for the kind words you said earlier as well. Right now, I have Michael, Council Carson would like to make some comments at this time. Go ahead, Council Carson.
Thank you for that presentation, Adam and Megan. And Andy, thank you guys for what you do on that board as well. I do have a question for you guys. This may be kind of a challenging question for you guys, but I wanted to pose it to you. I was actually going to go to a meeting and I will put this bug in your ear since now. On Edison, on Edison Avenue, all the way up Edison Avenue, Excel is planning on basically destroying any trees that are near the right-of-way or the road all the way up to the entire street. So my question is, can, can the Arbor Day Foundation, or is there a way for us to approach anyone to help relocate some of those trees back, you know, even ten feet maybe? Because personally, I have two trees. One is probably too big and will probably end up having to be destroyed. Another one is a pretty good-sized Aspen that's not a danger to the transmission line yet, but I'm pretty sure there's a way to save some of those trees. And I know from, you know, all the way up the street, I've had citizens approach me about this because everyone's very upset about it. You know, you have houses that are going to lose everything in the front of their house. And you guys spoke just now about right-of-way planting. And I don't know, I don't believe that Edison's the only street that does have a transmission line on it. So it will come into, it'll be something that we will come across again. But I just wanted to put that bug in your ear to see if there's a way to help relocate some of those trees. Because again, as Tree City USA, as a Tree City USA, we don't want to be destroying trees. And the amount of trees that are going to have to get destroyed because of this project is pretty significant. So I just wanted to put that bug in your ear, guys. I don't know if you know anything about it, but there is, they basically are going to wipe every tree out along the sideline from north to south on this. Well, I said we can relocate at least some of the younger trees. Personally, I'm going to look into, see what the cost is for my one Aspen. The elm I have is probably definitely going to get destroyed, but yeah, there's a ton of them.
I live on Edison, but unfortunately, it's the north side where it doesn't cut through, as you know. So I don't actually, I don't see that stretch of Edison too often, just, but I have gone up and down there and looked at some trees that were brought to Andy's concern by a citizen. And, and there's a couple, a couple of good points you bring up. The unfortunate thing is, is that the power must flow. And so that, that is a priority. And this is one reason why, over the years, the larger grants we've gotten, so this year, the $3,000 grant, we got to plant the trees up on the north side of, of State Avenue, north of the bridge, is those are underpowered lines. And the reason for that is that's money actually from the Excel Foundation. And the sole purpose of that particular grant money is for putting the trees under power lines, appropriate trees that don't get too tall, that are within their list of certified trees that they know aren't going to become a concern down the road. And this is, it's been an effort that municipalities and electric companies have been doing for probably twenty to thirty years. But unfortunately, there's many of trees such as on Edison that were planted before they realized the concerns and that it's, it's much more important to plant trees in the right place and the right location so that they don't have that problem down the road. But I think in regards to the options moving forwards, this is definitely something to to further discuss with that, the tree planting program. And maybe something like that could be a priority system in where we choose the locations for people that, that are applying for some of that money.
Well, and that, you know, the, I mean, I understand the, the whole geography of it. I'm just curious as to if this tree board is willing to tackle any, any of that in the form of looking for grant money to help some people relocate some of their trees? Because there is young trees that, that can be saved. There's a ton of them that can be saved, you know, if you have the right type of equipment. So it may be worth, it may be something, you know, worth looking into. Because I think, you know, in looking at them, I understand what you're saying as far as placement. But the distance is pretty far in some cases. You know, there's some issues that I'm not even, the tree is no danger to the line at all. And they've said that it isn't, but because of a regulation they have, they've got to clean that up. And even if the tree isn't a direct danger, because it's a transmission line, they can't have anything near it at all. The curious part to me is they stuck a street light right under it six months ago, so I'm very curious, right above my tree. So it's kind of perplexing. But again, there's some issues that, there's some of that I think would be worth looking into probably.
No, and they do have pieces of equipment for transplanting trees. That would be an interesting point of discussion on a tree board meeting to see if that's, that would be a worthwhile endeavor to, to run a cost on what they are. And if that's something that could be done to also have a benefit elsewhere in the city for moving trees around.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Council Carson. Up next, I have Council Griege.
Thank you, Mayor. Adam, Megan, Andy, of course, my neighbor Marilyn and all the community, I want to thank you guys for all the hard work you do. And as Adam mentioned, that majority of the, this committee is from my ward. And maybe one of the reasons is because my constituency has given me the honor of being there at each one of those thirty tree board presentations and plus, because I've been around thirty-six years. So I've seen a lot of things. I've seen how beautiful in planting trees are downtown. We always take care of them. Of course, the college, the golf course down at Cemetery, Cold Park, our residential people have planted a lot of trees out there. So it's something that, as you mentioned, Adam, that with trees, it just, it brings this brightness into a community. It even gives it this, this, this real inviting part to it. So I thank you guys for continuing to be interested in keeping trees growing in Alamosa. And good job. Thank you.
Thank you. There you go. Okay. Council Carson, I see your hand is up again. Council Carson.
Got to take it down.
Okay. No worries. Okay. Do we have any other further comments from council? No, I too would like to thank you also very much for the hard work and dedication that you put into the tree projects throughout our community. It really makes our community beautiful. Thank you for everything. Appreciate it. Okay. All righty. So we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Public Works, Public Hearing and Second Reading of Ordinance Number fourteen dash twenty-twenty.
Good evening, Council. Mr. Mayor, this is a second reading of Ordinance Number fourteen dash twenty-twenty, an ordinance amending section sixteen dash twenty-one and adding new sections sixteen dash twenty-five through twenty-nine to prohibit placing of snow or remove snow and ice onto the public right-of-way. If you recall, in the first reading, this ordinance helps provide clear rules and establishes expectations for property owners regarding the dumping and moving of snow from sidewalks and private property onto the public right-of-way. This ordinance exempts a few areas of town or at least one established area, and that's the Central Business District and properties along State Avenue between Third Street and Sixth Street due to the nature of the development of this section of town. A minor edit was made to the ordinance from the first version to the second. This clarifies the responsibility of clearing snow from driveways and sidewalks, and that's clarified in section one dash twenty-five. A red line was attached to the city council packet showing those changes between the first and second reading. Staff recommends that council open it up for a public hearing unless information is presented to the contrary, adopt ordinance number fourteen dash twenty-twenty.
Okay. So at this time, I would like to open it up for a hearing, public hearing, for the second reading of ordinance number fourteen dash twenty-twenty. If we have anyone in the audience on Zoom who would like to make any comments in reference to this ordinance, feel free to do so at this time. Ms. Martinez, will you give those instructions for the attendees of how to raise their hand and be recognized to make any comments?
Yeah. So if you're on the computer and the bottom of your screen, there should be a raise your hand feature. If you click that, it'll raise your hand. You're on the telephone, dial star nine, and it'll raise your hand.
Okay. I don't see anyone raising their hands. So now I will close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Council says, I can't see you. If you could raise your hand, that would be great. I have Council V Hill followed by Council Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor. Harry, can you please just explain a little bit about the exemptions from this? You talk about the Central Business District and another place. What, what do you mean when you say that?
So the Central Business District, you know, our downtown area between Denver and San Juan, maybe it's Edison there. Those properties, most of those structures are built right out to the property line, and there's no place for them to store the, the snow or, the snow on a private property, much less the public. They don't have any place to place it other than put it out into the public right-of-way. Our obligation with, with those areas with CDOT is to remove it within twenty-four hours anyways. So if they can at least remove it from the sidewalks, we'll come along and clean those areas up because our obligation requires.
Okay. And was there another, another place that is an exemption?
It's, it is State Avenue from Third to Sixth Street. Kind of have the same thing there. You know, we're talking about the depot and the railroad. They, they're built out right to the property lines. There's building structures.
Thank you.
Okay. Council Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Harry, for this. And I really appreciated your clarification on the question I asked last time. With this, the fine structure, so there, my understanding is there would be no warning. So there would just be really good education when the, but like in the winter this year, is that what our plan is since we've never had this in the past?
Yeah. Certainly always try to, try to reach out and visit with individuals, try to explain the situation. If that fails, then we'll, the first citation is a $50 citation, and then, then it moves up to a hundred and two hundred. We don't expect to ever, or hopefully not have to issue citations unless that's just our last means of, of ability to correct the problem. Typically, just visiting with individuals and getting them to understand the problems they're creating resolves most of our issues.
Great. So it wouldn't just be a, I mean, the first time, but we would still have conversations like we do for most of our other ordinances.
We'll start with the conversation. The first violation where we feel that we have to actually issue a citation, it is a $50 violation.
And what we can also do, Councilor Daniels, when we get closer to the snow season, is just some general reminders of what to do and not to do and, and help our community get prepared.
Thank you for that.
Okay. Thank you, Council Daniel. Up next, we have Council Griege, followed by Council V Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one comment. I'm still concerned about our resident people, you know, especially our seniors who go out there and shovel the snow, and then here comes the city and covers their sidewalks and all that back. I think what you're seeing is a lot of people that get fired up and they just end up throwing all that stuff back on the street. So I have that concern and I, I'm just speaking that out. So thank you.
Okay. Council V Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Harry, you talked about the, the two places that are exempt. I was wondering, I want to bring this to council. If we could extend the second exemption, you said State Avenue from Third to Sixth, take that all the way down to Eighth? Just because I think that, that sidewalk there by the green spot is super tight. There's like no place for them to, to put the snow if it's on the street. I'm wondering if we can, if we can do that.
So that can, that can be up to council discussion. I guess our expectation is they could put it off to the side where they've got their dirt parking lot, but that can be up for council discussion. And Harry, did you have anything to add before they discuss?
I think in that two-block stretch, the only individual property that would be affected would be the Green Spot, Alta Fuels, the Antique Shop, and the gas station. They all have areas to store their own snow. So I think, I think the Green Spot would be the only effective property on that area.
Where's that at? On State Street? Where would they store their snow though? That Antique Shop? There's no right-of-way there. Just curious, where, where would you expect them to store their snow?
I'm sorry, for which property?
Like that Antique Shop, that little strip there for, that you're talking about, that's in front of the opposite of the Green Spot. Where is there a spot for them to store their snow?
So the area I was referring, the area I was referring to is on the side where you can park on for Green Spot. There's that dirt area.
No, I'm talking about across the street from Green Spot. He said that that, that whole little section there with Antique Shop is, they have a spot to move their snow to. There is no yard there. There is no area there where they could put their snow. And also, I'm kind of curious, if you could just real quick run through that, just that exemption again, why, why First to Sixth gets it? Just for clarification, it's because there is no right-of-way, right?
It's Third to Sixth.
Okay. So it's because of the lack of a right-of-way, correct?
No, there's plenty of right-of-way, but a lot of the buildings are built out to the property line. So they, the building is adjacent to the right-of-way.
You're talking on the west side of the street?
They don't have a yard storage for it.
You're talking on the west side of the street, right?
Both sides.
Okay. I guess I'm a little confused. I'm going to have to, because I thought they had yards there. But again, like right there in front of that Antique Shop, it's the same scenario. The building's all the way to the street. So, I mean, all the way up to the sidewalk. So I'm not sure where that exemption wouldn't apply at that place as well.
So there's a little bit of space between the sidewalk and the curb. In that right-of-way, it's an eighty-foot right-of-way. You have a curb line, and then you have a five-foot space between the sidewalk and the street curb. They could put the snow right there.
And those houses on State Street on the north side of Maine, they're not, they're built the same way?
There's kind of a mix, but the majority are built outward. So we're talking, you know, the motor parts store, Blue Peaks, that section across.
Exactly how that other little building is. I mean, the sidewalk may be a little bigger there, I guess. But, you know, you're talking, I get, you know, it's pretty tiny little space. I just don't see how that exemption would apply. I'm not really sure about the pick and choosing there. It's a little strange to me, but.
Hey, it looks like I have a Council Daniel. You have your hands raised?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. So based on the conversation and some of the conversations you think that we've had regarding kind of walkways to that area and that there are some businesses like Alta, the Green Spot, and the Antique Store, I would be in support of extending the exemption as Councilor V Hill asked for and what it sounds like Councilor Carson is agreeing to. I think for our businesses, I think it's, I think we need to be cognizant and reasonable, but they are close to the, to the sidewalk and I, and I get the reason why. And so I would like council to consider extending it.
Okay. Council Daniel, thank you. Counselor. Okay, counselor Daniel, thank you. Counselor Carson?
I agree. I say I say we extend it.
Okay. So, Harry, one one question, what what are your thoughts on extending that again? Uh, per counselor V Hill and uh, counsel Carson and and counselor Daniel, what are your, what are your thoughts in regards to? Uh, is that something that's possible to do? Or is it something you would recommend, or is that gonna cause some undue um stress on on staff? What are your thoughts?
Um, if if council would like to see us extend that service southward, I don't have an issue with it. Um, trying to draw a line, what makes sense in our mind and in staff. Services and at what level that that is, that was that was the point that we drew the line was on Sixth Street. If council thinks that feels that it'd be more appropriate to extend it to what we'd. Um, call lower downtown, um, I'm certainly fine with that.
Okay. All right, so. Counsel, um, I think counselor Daniel, you made the motion, right?
Um, I did not, but I I will make the motion. Um. So I move that we approve on second reading ordinance fourteen dash twenty twenty with the amendment that we extend the. Um, the exemption to Eighth Street, if that is the correct street.
Well, second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Do we have any further discussions? If so, raise your hand. Okay, Ms. Martinez, will you uh take the vote?
Yes, sir. Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor V Hill?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counsel Broyles?
Yes.
Counsel Griege?
No.
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
The motion carried five to one with counselor Griege casting the no vote.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to the next item, uh, two. City manager legal, public hearing and second reading of ordinance number fifteen dash twenty twenty.
Thank you, Mayor. As we shared at the last council meeting. Um, we had very good discussions with the county in regards to the CARES funding. That the federal government has issued and has sent to the state. Um, the federal government also directly authorized CARES funding for communities above five hundred thousand, so they. Received a direct distribution, but obviously many communities in Colorado do not trigger that five hundred thousand um population. So um, the state is passing along through um to municipalities and as part of that, we do have to have an agreement. With the county in regards to how that funding will be split. And we do need to have this submitted um through the DOLA card portal by July seventh, so this is a fairly timely um. Item before you. Of the um, one point, almost one point four million dollars. We um discussed having a forty sixty percent um split. The county would receive sixty percent, that would cover as well the um expenses for the town of Hooper. Um, and since this is a public health um. Emergency, given that the public health is part of the county as well as the jail and some other considerations. Um, the forty sixty. At forty percent, the city would expect to see five hundred and sixty-two thousand, four hundred and three dollars. And this funding can only go for those costs that we incur that are directly associated um with COVID. And it cannot be used to backfill any lost revenues we might have. And with that, I'm available for questions.
Okay, so what I'm going to do now is um. Open up the uh public hearing. For the second reading of ordinance number fifteen dash twenty twenty. At this time, uh, Ms. Martinez, will you give any attendees the instructions of how to raise their hands? So if they would like to participate in this hearing, they can do so.
Yep, so if you are on the call and you're on a computer in the. On the bottom of your screen, there should be a raise your hand feature. If you click that, it'll raise your hand. To let us know you wish to speak. If you are on the telephone, dial star nine and it'll raise your hand for you.
Okay, the instructions have been given. Um, at this time, I do not see any hands raised uh in regards to the attendees. So now I will officially close this public hearing and bring it back to council. I see we have counselor Carson with his hand raised.
Uh, I was actually, as long as there's no comments, I was just gonna go ahead and make a motion that we approve. Um, on second reading ordinance fifteen dash twenty twenty.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, if not, Ms. Martinez, will you please take the vote?
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor V Hill?
Yes.
Counselor Broyles?
Yes.
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
Counsel Griege?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
The motion unanimously.
Thank you. Up next on the agenda, under item C, we have committee reports. Uh, do we have any committee reports at this time? I see uh one hand raised at this time. Counselor Daniel, followed by counselor Carson.
It's the meeting for counselor Carson and I, I think. Um, but I wanted to let you know, I attended both the Alamosa Housing Authority and the Homeless Coalition. With the Housing Authority, they're doing some really neat things, I think, to support their community. They're doing some concrete projects. They're also putting in two playgrounds um that I'm really excited about, and they've added some bike racks. And so they're getting some really good feedback from their residents. Using that knowledge, and I think the board is very active as well, and so I've been really impressed with the Housing Authority and how. Um, they're really thinking things through for the future and asking some really good questions. Um, we did have a socially-distanced in-person meeting, which I think was um fascinating. It was only one of the first meetings I've had. Um, and everybody wore masks. It was very appropriate and everybody was spread out, but it was nice to, you know, actually see people, so the Housing Authority was trying that. Um, and for the Homeless Coalition, I I just really want to applaud the conversations that we've been having. There's still a lot of resource sharing. Uh, some information about where we're gonna go next and really some thoughtful processes about how. This needs to become a community conversation and raise the level of everyone's education related to homelessness in our community and the unsheltered homeless. Um, as well as the other people who are at risk of being homeless, because there's so. There are so many people on the spectrum of homelessness when we look at it as a as a whole. And then how resources that they can access, resources that they want to access, and the different resources that are available in our community. Is not something everyone has access to, so I've really appreciated the committee coming together for that. And also really trying to elevate the conversation to not put. All of the homeless knowledge and need on La Puente as our primary service provider. Uh, so it's been really nice to kind of watch that development of our team members and really watch those conversations be elevated, so I've really appreciated that. Um, if you want to call and listen in, I think our our meetings are really uh fun to listen to. We have a lot of passionate people. Uh, one thing that is coming up that I just kind of wanted to alert counselors to is not as a subcommittee of this group, but as a separate. Kind of planning opportunity. We will be pulling together some people, starting with some people from this committee, but again, as a separate one. To talk about what we're going to do in the winter for people who are unsheltered and try to have a plan quicker with our community efforts. When the shelter is unavailable or the shelter is full or there are other shelter restrictions. What some other options for people will be, and so you may be hearing from community members that, hey, we heard this committee. Is completely separate from the coalition, but it was discussed there. Um, so I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any about either of those committees.
Okay, thank you, counselor Daniel. Okay, counselor Carson?
Thank you, counselor Daniel, for reporting on the Homeless Coalition meeting. Um, yeah, it's it's moving forward quite well. I didn't make it, but I was able to watch the presentations after. Um, so thanks again for reporting on that. Uh, I just wanted to give a quick update um on the COG meeting and the the DRG meeting from this last week. For primarily for anybody listening and for uh council, there's uh, you know, the the COG mini-grants are available right now, so there's a ton of money for that. There's CARES funding available through uh the COG as well. Um, and they're gonna get also uh some grant money for uh at-risk populations that will be accessible. So if you have, if you can reach out to anybody at the COG or or the DRG, uh, it's it's really a really a good time right now to try to access some of that money. Um, to help on not only uh at-risk populations, but uh even small businesses, they've got another. It looks like they've gotten another hundred and five thousand dollars uh. In the last month for small business loans again, so um. It's probably a good time to approach them. I just wanted to put that out there. Uh, that's it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, uh, counselor Carson. Okay, do we have any other council members who would like to um? Have a committee report to report? Okay, I don't see any hands raised. So we'll move on down to the next item on the agenda, which is staff announcement.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, from a staff update, the only item I wanted to share a little bit of information with city council. Is um related to the article that ran um. In the Valley Courier, related to the the shooting that we experienced here in Alamosa. I think I sent an email to Keith Turney expressing my disappointment on the lack on of. Correct information than accuracies that were in that article as related to the city. And I just wanted to share further, just from a public perception and education perspective. It was very disappointing how that was written, because not only was it factually incorrect. It gave the appearance as if the city has not taken this seriously and and has not done certain things. Which, as we all know, is is simply not true, and so as a reminder. The very unfortunate shooting of George Floyd occurred on May twenty-fifth. At the very next city council meeting, which was on June third. Is when city council spent probably, I would say, at least thirty minutes, if not more. Discussing what your individual thoughts were on that situation, what it meant for our community and the nation. But we also discussed then the drawing together of res of a resolution, which turned out to be resolution number ten. What we wanted included in that resolution as our statement to the community on these these items. Um, we also spent time talking about the other steps that the city should take. In regards to being responsive and moving forward in a positive direction, and we talked about ASU's roundtables. At that time and and to coordinate with ASU on having some community discussions, and so. That was at the very next city council meeting. That we had those. Now, I think sometimes um. Public expectation compared to what reality is for a local government can be a little different. I think. People think when there's a shooting, they want to see the mayor on the news, standing in front of a podium that night. Issuing a strongly worded statement about where the city stands on something. And that may work for some cities. It probably works better for those cities that have a strong mayor form of government. But for cities like us that are council manager form of government, that has policies. That are in place that that guide what council does when speaking on behalf of the city in a formal manner. That it requires you as a group to discuss that and reach agreement before anyone's authorized to issue those kinds of statements. That's where there can sometimes be a gap in perception. Related to what people may think cities might need to do versus what we need to in order. So I think it's important when to know from a timeline perspective. The very next meeting following that shooting is when council began their public discussion. In a public meeting that is available through YouTube for the video, for the public to view at any time. And has a reporter from the Valley Courier attending. So that happened on June third at our city council meeting. The next day on June fourth is when we did have our shooting. The day after that, on June fifth, is when the mayor's video, which directly spoke to some of these issues, was released. And then at the next meeting, council meeting on June seventeenth, is when you guys approved resolution ten. And as you know, we released that um through social media and those other items, and so. It's not something where this is just Heather's opinion that the language maybe was inflammatory or. There is a certain slant that was just factually inaccurate, and that inaccuracy painted a picture that. As if the city was not making comments, was not taking a stance and was not giving. These national movements that are going on and our local um. Social unrest weight, we have been, and I just, I think we need to be clear about that. Additionally, and this may seem a little more personal. When there was comments in regards to what the city manager, all the city manager had to say is we're doing public education afterwards. That sounds a little bit like we're just brushing it off, which is actually not what the conversation was that I had. With the reporter. When she contacted me, it was because she was doing a deep dive into the Facebook accounts of those two individuals. And was having trouble getting access to one of them and was wanting to know if the city had any way of getting. Her access to that individual's Facebook account, which we don't. And and she was worried if it was gonna be a balanced article and I, you know, I explained that that needs to be her call if she still writes the article without. Having that information or not. If she would have asked me, what are the city's plans moving forward? Obviously, since you guys have given the direction, I would have explained that we are looking at doing roundtables with ASU. And potentially other community discussions. I had not discussed with the Department of Justice at that time, their ability to come in and do some facilitation, so I wouldn't have been able to answer that. That's a conversation that occurred afterwards. Um, but those weren't the questions that were being presented to me, and I think as I talked to the mayor. It's important for you to hear how his conversations occurred with that reporter as well, and then how they were. Strangely condensed for that to fit the story, and Mayor, I didn't know if you wanted to take a minute for that?
Sure, thank you, Heather, for for bringing that up as well, because uh. I too was interviewed by Susan Green for over thirty minutes. And I wish that more of my comments were taken into consideration for the article. Um, but only a few sentences were quoted out of over thirty minutes of conversation. Uh, and I did say, we do not have the big city issues with law enforcement officers uh. Uh, like like they have in in the Denver metro area, and I mentioned that our law enforcement officers care and I care about them. And uh, I also mentioned that we know how to get along here, but in following that, she wrote. Mayor Ty Coleman said as an explanation for his silence. In reference to me, council and staff not making a statement about the killing of George Floyd. Now, over the past three months, I, along with council and staff.
Hello?
Have that with.
Can I hear him?
Mayor, try it again.
Mayor, as as we wait for the mayor to come in, the other thing that the mayor had shared with me as part of that discussion is he spent a lot of time talking about our diversion programs. Our lead programs and some of those items that we.
Am I back now?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. I apologize a- a- about that. Um, but um. I did mention that, and and I guess they were making it in reference to us being silent and and not doing anything in reference to the George Floyd killing. But over the past three months, I alone with council and staff have been more than just silent. And our city has done more than to do nothing. Over the past several months, I alone with council and staff have been dealing with multiple issues from. The stress of the COVID nineteen pandemic, addressing local small businesses reopening needs. Find suitable location for a homeless population due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. Dealing with protesters pushing boundaries, creating a loan fund to help keep our local small businesses open. And addressing community concerns about the George Floyd killings and along with uh the wearing mask issues. And dealing with the projected budget shortfall uh that is due to this pande pandemic. Addressing these issues require more than us doing nothing, and there is no way on earth. We could have addressed these issues by being silent. I think it is important for people to know that as council. I think it is important for people to know that as council, we are a team. No one council member speaks for the entire city council, including me. No one council member speaks on behalf of the entire city and our former government. That is why we sought council input and came together for a resolution for our city to address several of the issues we were needing to address at the time. Because we have to collaboratively work together to have a statement of unity when we're working together. Now, the message that I put out on the video the first week of June, it was a message about unity and our community working together to overcome bias along with some of the other issues and challenges that we're working on. To make sure that our community is aware of the things that are going on in our community, every week, a council member gets an opportunity to record an update and keep the community informed on what's going on in our community. And we're doing that not because we're being silent and not because we're doing nothing. We're doing this because we want the community to know what's going on in our community so that they can be aware and updated. Now, in my interview, I was asked about the law enforcement officers. And none of the information I shared was mentioned. I mentioned that our law enforcement officers practice community policing daily. Many of our law enforcement officers live throughout our community. They participate in local community activities and events. They participate in the LEAD program, which is the Law Enforcement Assistant Diversion Program that has helped several people in our community and people throughout our San Luis Valley community as well. And the LEAD program is a pre-booking diversion program that aims to improve public health and to end the cycle of recidivism. Instead of being charged and booked, following an arrest, the arresting officer identifies the arrestee as a potential participant for the diversion program and connects them with a case manager. The case manager then provides a holistic approach to connecting individuals with resources such as housing and substance use treatment services. Our enrolling in participant in vocational training courses. The main principle of the LEAD program is collaborative partnerships between local law enforcement, district attorney's office, sheriff's office, treatment providers and other community stakeholders. In addition to that, our law enforcement officers work with the Center for Restorative Program, which has an array of preventive and intervention services for youth and families, all rooted in restorative principles. I also mentioned that our law enforcement officers participate in career fairs at our local schools and colleges. And students get an opportunity to get to know our law enforcement officers on a personal level. I also put that our law enforcement have community events that they put on that are fun, like the Fright Fest, where law enforcement officers host fun-filled events with our kids, where their parents can come for games and eat safe candy. And then I also mentioned that our law enforcement officers have a program in which is called Shop With A Cop. So during the Christmas holiday season, they take local kids shopping for Christmas gifts. Unfortunately, none of these comments were mentioned in the news article. It was my hope, though, that our community would continue to respond and will continue to respond positively towards our law enforcement officers, towards our city staff and towards our city council. Now, I was also asked about the actions of that one individual. And I specifically mentioned that the actions of the individual that shot Danny Pruitt is not in any form or fashion a representation of the great people we have in the city of Alamosa. Our council, our staff will continue to work together as a team for the best interest for our entire community. So I was bothered, just like Heather was bothered, because our council doesn't do nothing, just nothing. And our council is more than being silent. We speak up, we communicate, but it appears now we have to do it more often so that people can feel that our message is being heard out there in the community. I'll turn it back to you, Heather.
And I don't know if we need to speak out more often. We could always speak out more often or is if it maybe just the reporter needed to do the same due diligence of research and take a look at what action we actually did do instead of reporting nothing. But that's all I had from a staff update and I didn't know if council had any questions.
Counsel, do we have any hands raised? Anybody? Okay. I don't see any hands raised, just in case I don't. Okay, so now we will go ahead to council comments. Do you have any council comments? Okay, I have a counselor. Okay, here we go. I'll give you the order. Counselor Daniel, Counselor Brols, Counselor V Hill. So we'll start off with Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor. So I wanted to do just a couple of updates. I have, we had one of our art pieces that I think got blown out in the wind, had some challenges, one of the public art pieces on display. And I just wanted to say thank you to Heather and to Kelly for helping me take care of it and getting it fixed right away. I know she outreach, Kelly outreach the artist and there's a plan to get it taken care of. But I just, I had to call Heather on a weekend and she was very kind. And then I looked like I was stealing an art piece, but I wasn't. But it's gotten taken back to where it needs to go. The other piece is I attended on behalf of the city. I attended the Behavioral Health Task Force meeting that was really an update about the new kind of structure of behavioral health funding in our state. And so again, as we've talked about before, they're really looking at a different structure, trying to provide more support throughout the continuum of behavioral health needs, understanding that there's more crisis services needs. But in between someone being completely, completely well and being in that extreme of crisis, there's some case management and some other services that need to be available in all of our communities across Colorado. And so one of the things that the task force is looking at is really how to help that happen. And they're looking at a behavioral health authority that will sit in between communities and the state that would not be attached to the regional accountable entities like with Medicaid, but is its own separate entity. And so I do think, Council, we should really check that out, make sure that's something that we, we support the time. They're getting ready to present it back to the governor. The task force is asking for feedback. So if you have had experience with our community mental health center system or just someone in general who is having trouble accessing services or doesn't need high intensity services, they need minimal services but are struggling, it's important for you to check out what's been done with the task force and what's been done in each of those subcommittees. Because I think some really great work has been put in across the state but could really change the way mental health care looks in our, in our state moving forward and the way that it is funded. The last thing that I really want to talk about is really, I appreciate what the mayor and Heather have said. I do think we can sound silent because we're not shouting. I think we come at things from a very measured response, which can feel not reactionary and that can be challenging for people because they want us to jump and they want those reactions. And I think we are thoughtful in a lot of ways, which also means that it takes more time for us to put some things together. So I appreciate Heather's comment that we could potentially provide more comments. That would require us preparing a little bit quicker and being able to be more nimble that way. And in our form of government, it is harder because we all have regular jobs, if not more than regular jobs, that we're managing in addition to being the public representatives for our community. And so I appreciate the thoughtfulness that we've had and I appreciate how we've done things. And I can understand the need for maybe us to have more faster comments or faster reactions to people and why people were struggling with where we were in some of those statements. So I can absolutely see both sides, but I don't, I also don't want to be over reactionary. We need to, we need to take the time and be cognizant and be thoughtful in our responses. And I think we do that. I think maybe though, we maybe need to be a little bit more nimble potentially as a council and think about that. And the last thing I didn't want to miss, going back to the mask conversation. I've gotten a lot of feedback in, in the position that I am in my, in my day job. We, we wear masks every day. I wear a mask all the time going out into public. I, I make sure that I have one on. We have ones in our car when we're going into places. I recognize that there is a huge amount of personal freedom that people in Colorado and people in Alamosa value. And I also recognize there's a lot of science and statistics that's being shown that this really will help the slow, this will help slow community spread if we take some of these these precautions and ask people to use masks. I have read some things about ACLU concerns, if this is an overly fine thing. We need to talk about people's individual freedoms. If there would be exceptions, how we would enforce it. There's, there's a ton that goes with this mask kind of conversation. And then I do have questions for Eric on what our process would be because we can't just decide today that we want to do that. If it would be a regular ordinance process or because this is a public health crisis, if it would be more of an emergency ordinance. So I kind of have those questions. I apologize for my really long-winded comments, but I appreciate you all listening.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Daniel. Okay, next, we have the V Hill. I'm sorry, Counsel Brols, Counsel Brols.
No, I just wanted to, I just wanted to say that I think we have reacted appropriately to the public. I hate to overreact. I hate to be too, you know, too actionary. And I know that there's people in our community who, I guess I call them reactionists. They react quickly to anything that goes on. So, and I appreciate the mayor and I appreciate our city manager for what you've done. I think it's appropriate. I think, I think it's perfectly fine. I do, I do want to say I have had three calls if city council is considering about changing the funding of our police department. And of course, my, my reply is no, city council is not, has not done anything to change the funding to our police department. I continued to support our police like we talked about. I continue to personally think that we need to continue to make sure we have a sufficient number of officers. And I really appreciate the professionalism of our police force. I've heard several comments since I've been on city council about how professional our police force is. The other thing I wanted to point out is the golf course has come along very well. And I'm very impressed with our greens. The condition of the greens are nearly PGA condition. If you have a chance to go out to the golf course, the greens are in spathacular condition. The course itself has come along well. It'll probably take this year to get all the grass grown like we want it. But, but the course is looking great. The other thing about masks, my comment is I hate to do anything that's mandatory. I mean, I can see us recommending or strongly recommending, but being mandatory, I think, goes a little bit too far. And that's, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Brols. And Mr. Suez, we're going to come back to you in a few minutes. I know Counselor Daniel had a question for you, but if you don't mind, let, let's let Counsel V Hill get his comment in and then we'll follow up to your response to her question to you. Is that okay? Okay, Counsel V Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. I got three things real quick. Number one is a thank you to Harry and Public Works for putting up those signs that the road is closed in my neighborhood for First Street. Appreciate that. Also, I've had some questions about people driving ATVs and four-wheelers on old airport road and how that kind of connects into the city. And should that be something that the city is looking out for? Or is that the county or both? Or what do we do there? If y'all could take note of that and look into that, I'd appreciate that. And then the third thing is also with what Ms. Daniel was talking about with the masks. I just want to click, because I've, I've received a few phone calls from people who work in grocery stores and a couple from Walmart and a couple from Safeway and one from City Market. And they work there and they are, they're afraid of people walking in without a mask and they're, they have to wear a mask. And they're very afraid of catching COVID because like we all know, we all understand, we don't know who has it. If you're asymptomatic, then the dangers they're putting themselves in. But just, I did some math before the meeting started. And I just looked at the numbers of positive cases, new positive cases just in Alamosa since June 16th. And the total number is seventy. June 16th, so I'll just, real quick, I'll make it fast. But if we go from June 16th to July 1st, the numbers of new cases is 1, 1, 20, 3, 16, 6, 2, 3, 2, 12, 3, and 1. That's seventy new cases in two weeks. That's a lot, guys. And we, we need to have this discussion about the mask. I think that's what leadership needs to, what we need to do as leaders. Is there, is there a way we can talk to our, our business community and especially our grocery stores where a lot of people go into and say, can we make a mask mandatory for going in there? I mean, because what, what, we're, we're putting our, our our local hospitals and our healthcare providers under major stress. Major stress. Is there anything that we, we need to do something? We got to help these folks out. I want us to talk about this a little bit.
Okay, we'll, we'll talk about all of this here in a second. I want to make sure everyone has an opportunity to, to talk about other comments that they may have. And then we'll circle back to that comment that you have. Okay, Counsel Diego?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of comments. First, I think the way yourself and Heather approached this news person, you said, said it right, you know. You represented us perfectly, you know. What you told them and how we, we all work as a team. And we're not a type of group of people where as Counselor Brols says, we react and we spontaneous react. I, I think we are organized enough and we work together as a team long enough where what we do is we do best for the community and we just don't spontaneously go crazy and, and start making remarks. Just like you said, not one person on this council can speak for the whole council. It's the whole council that deliberates back and forth and finally comes out with the, with what we want to represent to the community. Also, I appreciate these two people from the medical field coming to us. I've had an opportunity to travel to northern New Mexico. You cannot go anywhere, into anywhere. There's a big sign right there that says, "No mask, do not enter." Same thing you went towards Pueblo or Springs, all those businesses. If you don't have a mask, you cannot enter. And I know we can't push it on, on the people, but if we can visit us, as Counselor V Hill says, with maybe our business people, they're scared of getting this virus. All you have to do is place a big old sign that the people will burn. And once they get, once they leave there, they jump back in their car and go home. But I, I think, I think it's very important and with the cases that we're getting, you know, the spike here in the valley. In fact, the governor's even mentioned that he's watching the San Luis Valley because of all the viruses that's going on here. So I think we do need to have a strong discussion. And, and if there's a way that maybe our fellow business people can help us out, we can probably work something out. And I know it's, it's a freedom deal, but it's, you know, if you're going to put that virus on me, you better be wearing a mask around me because I don't want that. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counsel Diego. Counselor Carson?
So I got a couple of things. You know, in, in regards to, to your response to the paper, I appreciate what you guys did there because we weren't silent. And I do understand what people, especially today, what people need or want or expect. And I think that has become the norm and I think that's a problem. So I don't agree that we need to be quick in our responses. I don't agree that we need to be So I don't agree that we need to be quick in our responses. I don't agree that we need knee jerk reactions. And policy based on emotion is bad policy, period. Um, you need to be measured. You need to think and talk and talk through these things. You can't just have knee jerk reactions to policy. It's never good and usually it ends up in producing negative results. Personally, as far as masks go, I don't feel, I don't agree with you guys. I don't agree with, with uh. Making it a mandate. Uh, I think as a business and as entities, you do have that right. You should have that right to, to mandate that people wear a mask coming into your business. Um, I personally am wearing masks in supermarkets and in businesses that are mandating it, but um. I don't think that we have uh, I don't think that it's good policy to make it a mandate as a city. Uh, we can go fourteen miles south and see what happened in Laerra. They mandated a, a mask policy in town. A couple of weeks ago and it blew up in their face pretty bad. They had a huge attendance at their, at their town hall meeting and uh. The public spoke pretty loudly in response to that. It was an overwhelming majority that said, no, we will not be forced to wear masks. And again, I believe that individual businesses have that right and they should ask if that's how they feel because there is businesses that are being abused on both sides. I think helping fan that polarization is not good policy and I think if we are going to have a, a discussion on this, we should start in the middle and not. On, on either side of the road. Cause that's, that's how conversations tend to lean today, to one side or the other and it's never productive. But uh, you know, if we are going to have that conversation, I, I suggest that we do have it uh. Starting in the middle and then we do give, give everybody their voice and their common ground because not everybody does agree that we should wear a mask all the time. I, I, again, I'm forty seven years old and in my life, they've never told me that they could cure a virus. And so, one of my biggest fears today is almost not catching the virus and, and being in fear of this virus the rest of my life. And I don't want to be that way. So uh, it is a valid fear. There is many people getting sick and I, and I don't uh. I don't disagree that we do have new cases, but I do, I do hard, I do very, very, uh, I am in a huge disagreement with a lot of the data. So um, you know, you, you'd have to give me some pretty convincing stuff to, to change my mind at this point as far as that. Cause I do, I'd like everyone else here to do my own research and uh. I, I am skeptical of the numbers as they're born. Um, the testing is, is questionable to me. The way the positive results come back is questionable to me. And so I do have my own opinion on that. Uh, so again, if we're gonna have that conversation, let's start it in the middle. And in response to uh, again, our, our, our media responses, I guess. I, I do understand, like I said earlier, what people want and I appreciate that we don't just jump the gun and, and uh. Make policy on, on emotion. So thank you guys. But again, let's start these conversations in the middle. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Carson. Okay, Ms. Brooks, your hand is raised.
Thank you, Mayor. And after I talk, I'll remember to lower it. Um, Chief Anderson had sent me the quick answer to Counselor Vial's question. On the ATVs and so I just wanted to get that out quickly, um, both for the public and if Counselor Vial wants to respond to whoever's been communicating to him. ATVs are not street legal vehicles in the city of Alamosa nor Alamosa County. There are some cities like South Fork that have created a permitting um, program, but we have not and neither has um, Alamosa County. So they are not supposed to be on any public roadway, highway or street. Um, unless it's an emergency situation or agricultural purposes. So. Um, if you know of people who are seeing this, have them contact either the sheriff's office if it's in the county. Um, or have them contact the police department if it's within city limits.
I'd like to make a comment there real quick. Uh, I do, I, I am aware of what you guys are saying and I've called in the past and. Before you, I was even on council, I did call and ask and I was told by PD at that time that they are not allowed on pavement. And uh, I personally have driven an ATV up the side of the road to the, to the river to look at situations back there. And I've driven on the side of the road and there is a trail all the way along the side of Old Airfond Road. So I'm not sure if they're saying people are driving on the pavement or they're driving on the trail. But it would be uh, something that if we're gonna address that, uh, we should probably create some sort of ordinance policy. Cause in the past I have been told that as long as they are not on pavement, um, you won't get a ticket. I did ask as far as what about crossing the road and I was told by an officer at that time, which was maybe ten years ago. If you want to push it across the street, go ahead, turn it off and push it across the street, but they're not allowed on pavement. And that's what I was told by PD, like I say, probably a decade ago. Um, but yeah, there is a trail all the way up and down Airport Road on the side of the road. So uh, we should probably address that because I personally have driven on that.
So that, so the response that Chief Anderson, and he can chime in, gave me is related to being on streets and paved roadways. Chief, I didn't know if you wanted to contribute anything to the idea of if they're off of the road.
Yeah, honestly, I'd have to look that one up. I just know that currently it's, it's prohibited. You can't have it on the, on the roadway. Any highway or street in, in Alamosa currently. So I'll have to look that one up.
We'll get back to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms., Ms. Heather, so any other comments before I um, have Eric answer. Counselor Daniel's question? Am I connected?
Yeah.
Okay.
You can hear you.
So Eric, I think the question that um, Counselor Daniel had was um. Do we have to do this as a normal ordinance process where it's spread out over two different readings or. Because it is a public health emergency, could we consider the, um, doing it as an emergency ordinance?
I think we could, we could do it as an emergency ordinance. So that means you do it all in one reading rather than spreading it out in two. Um, I, I do have other concerns with it, in particular that we do have. Expertise in Alamosa County on how to address the COVID nineteen health crisis. That expertise officially resides with the county's director of public health. And so I think a, a more appropriate lobbying point. For uh, Dr. Sandeager and Dr. Steinberg would be with the county public health director. Um, the city itself, all deference to, to you council members with your experience. Has no medical expertise. The best we have is we can listen to. The medical experts who just spoke to us today. Um, we can look at, I, I was just sharing with some other staff members earlier today. The new dashboard website developed by Harvard that was featured in the NPR. Uh, story this morning that indicates if you go and look at Alamosa County on that dashboard. That we are in a code orange situation. We, we are. Experiencing very high uh, community spread currently. And so we definitely have an issue. Whether council feels like it wants to take that issue and come up with solutions. That open it up to potshots about legislating when it has no expertise is something that concerns me. Um, I do also note that both, or that Valleywide. SLV Health and the Rio Grande Hospital did jointly submit an official letter. Requesting that people seriously undertake to wear masks, but. I didn't see anywhere in there where the entities as a whole. As, as sort of the medical expertise entities that we have in the valley and certainly have more as well, but those are kind of the big players. They, they did not as entities um, lobby council or the county health director. To is, issue mask wearing mandates. So I think. Existing outside of your areas of expertise, when there is an officially designated county. Person with authority to issue mask mandates um, could be something that would be concerning. You can do it. Um, I was actually just, while this discussion was going on. The Denver Post and Nine News both had lists uh, from earlier, way back in May actually. Of Colorado municipalities that have instituted mask wearing in public requirements. Um, so I, I'm fairly confident that it can be done. I just caution. You as counselors um, in waiting into areas that are outside of your expertise. Now, you do have data and you can understand the data as well as anybody. Um, national data, again, like the Harvard's. Uh, model or not model Harvard's dashboard. I think Johns Hopkins has one as well. Um, CDC may even have them. And, and are being ignored, but uh, but you as council members, unless I don't know you as well as I think I do. Don't have that personal background. So, answer, the answer to Counsel Daniel's question, let me just shorten that. The answer to Counselor Daniel's question is yes, you could do it as an emergency ordinance.
To piggyback onto Eric's, um, if, if council wants to direct this conversation to the, the county health. Um, that's one path. If you guys decide that you still want to have this discussion. Then I can provide some advice in regards to maybe some outreach and, and that kind of stuff, but we don't need to go down that path if, if you follow. Um, what the city attorneys pointed out in regards to the, the, the county health and, and what mandates they are looking at.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Suelzo and thank you uh, Ms. Brooks. Let me see, I have a one hand raised, Counsel Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I wanted to say thank you to Eric. So I was sort of asking two questions, counsel. One was like. A, should we have this discussion? And yes, I think we should have the discussion about where our expertise lies and where our feelings are. But also I wanted to, I've been asked as a process question by community members. What the process is for an ordinance to pass like this and what that would take and if it would be our regular process or a different process. So I do appreciate the clarification. I just want to be sure that I wasn't, I wasn't saying, hey, we need to jump on this right now. Again, going back to that being nimble but not reactionary kind of thing. Um, I do think. We've worked really hard with county public health and others to say, we really want this to happen in our community. We want you to be safe. We want you to. Wear masks and, and have kind of this back and forth um, guidance and support of what they have going on. Um. Again, going into the, what, what I think we've learned is from those statistics is really. How do we help people understand that and where do those messages get sent? And how can we support our businesses if they don't want people coming in without masks? If we don't want people on our trails without masks, which I, again, I don't think that that's the, the way we necessarily want to go if. Appropriate social distancing can be done. We know certain people can't wear masks because of medical conditions. And so I think. It may be worth it to say, do we support our businesses who say you can't come in without a mask? Do we support our public places and say if you're gonna be at, in our public spaces and you can't do social distancing, you need to wear a mask? I mean, I'm not sure if we even want to have that discussion. Um. Not, again, trying not to get out of, outside of our realm of expertise, but also recognizing that without guidance. Or without some support and without some education about whatever that guidance from public health needs to be. We need to figure that out too. Like, how are we gonna be flexible to put information out right away if public health does change their mind? Um, about an ordinance soon and all of our buildings say, with our employees going in them, the city has made a stance. You will wear a mask when you are in, in your hallways. Like, you will wear a mask when you're within six feet and not being able to social distance. In our buildings that we currently have. Um, so we've said something, even if it's right now just a personnel policy. So I just, I just want us to think about those things.
And Counselor Daniel, I want to clarify, those weren't policies we came up with. Those were legal requirements per the governor's orders and the health orders. So I just want to make sure that, to provide that clarity.
I appreciate that. I totally forgot that reminder. So thank you very much.
Okay.
Hey Eric, uh, quick, a quick clarification, Eric. I, the data, and I don't know if you're referring to me, but the data that I am gathering is from CDC. And it is, is all mainstream data and, and priority data and the CDC's dashboard does not show us as a hotspot. We're right at the bottom of the middle. And I looked at it real time. So I just wanted that clarification as well. I am not a medical expert, but I'm a data expert. And so that's where my expertise does come in. And so I do, I do look at both sides of the data and that's where my opinion comes from. So that was for just a point of clarification.
Yeah, Counsel Carson, I wasn't making any comments on anybody's use of data. I'm just saying that, that none of you have medical expertise. But all of you have the ability to look at data. Okay, thank you. Okay.
There's actually a difference between looking at data and interpreting data. Just another point of clarification. Everybody can look at it.
Alright, so.
David.
We, we've uh, listened to the advice of our attorney. Um, and I, I do advise that we listen to his advice and follow his instructions and guidance. Uh, throughout this uh, process, but I am just one. So I would like to hear some of the comments. It looks like I have a few more hands raised now. Let me get back to that. Well, now I just have two hands raised. Uh, Counsel Brawls followed by Counsel Vio.
Yeah, again, I, I don't want to overreact, you know, seventy people, I understand, sounds like a lot of people, but. Understand that's less than one percent of the population of Alamosa. And I just want to bring that up to people's attention. And again, every business has the right to demand that people wear a mask when it's their business. I, I did that the other day. I went, go to a business, didn't have my mask on. They said, please go get your mask on to come in. So I did. And so each business can, can do that. Uh, they don't need a government mandate. Uh, for, you know, to, for them to do business. So I, I just want to bring up those two points.
Thank you, Counsel Brawls. Counsel Vio.
Let, uh, two questions. Eric, if the county were to. Come up with some legislation or an ordinance to mandate mask wearing, would the city have to follow that?
Yes, if the county uh, director of public health issued an order. Saying everyone in Alamosa County must wear masks in public places, that would apply to public places within the city.
Okay, thank you. And then. I would like us to, I would, and I'm not an expert, okay? I, I, I totally understand that. But, but what, but my question still remains, what do we do with folks who are working at these businesses? Who are constituents of ours, who live in the city limits, who are afraid to go to work?
That's not our job. That's the job of their, their employer to mandate that, that, that uh, requirement to walk into that business. Again, that goes back to the individual business. That's up to them to mandate whether people can walk in or not. Like David said, like Counsel Boyle said, there's plenty of businesses that will not let you in. My, my uncle's gas station, two miles over the state line in Costilla, New Mexico, you cannot walk through the front door without a mask. That is a mandate that the state has there, of course, to, and like you said, if the county doesn't have to abide by that. But today, we can't, we can't force, we can't help those people or, or help their fears. Um, that's something that their boss has to take care of, their employer has to mandate in order for people to walk into that business. And they have every right to do that.
Yeah, have they talked to their employer?
So, well, part of that, you know, part of that, and, and I think Counselor Daniel was speaking to this. There is a lot of chatter uh, in the news lately about precisely that issue. Where the employer has a policy that says anyone coming, coming in has to wear a mask. Public comes in not wearing a mask, the, the twelve dollar an hour employee says, hey sir, please put on your mask. And gets spit on. And so if, you know, if we made clear that the employer has recourse. To our law enforcement to help address those kinds of situations. Um, then, then that's certainly one thing we can do there, that that is within your realm of expertise.
But that's assault. Spitting on someone is assault. So that would be a charge, isn't it? I mean, just correct me if I'm wrong, but somebody gets spit on, that's assault.
That's an assault.
Yeah, it is. So there you would call the police and the police would handle it as a crime. I, I mean, just, isn't that the way we do it in today's society?
Well, take it down from, A, I don't believe spitting on someone. Well, take it down from, A, I don't believe spitting on someone is an assault unless you've got a communicable disease or something. I don't know. You could ask.
It is assault. It is.
But B, that's just an example. I mean, take the spectrum from then maskless screaming at that poor person from a foot away. That's not an assault.
But Eric, Eric, the same thing is going the other way. You're having people get shot for not wearing masks by people that are wearing masks. You can't, you, you're, you're, you're finding it, it's a double edged sword. You know, you know dang well that there's people getting hurt on both sides of this argument.
All I'm saying, that you can put, you can make clear to businesses who want to enforce mask wearing, that we are, we back them up and are in their court.
So, so, or Counselor Swishel, do we need to create something new in order to do that? Or do our current ordinances cover how the police can provide support to those business owners?
I would defer that again also to the chief, but my initial reaction is yes, our current ordinance has covered that. So this is just a communication issue of, of a public stance issue rather than changing any ordinances. That's a trespass pure and simple.
Okay.
Okay, let's.
Get a discussion about this.
I have one more question, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Counselor Veho.
So I know we've been doing these weekly updates with each different council, with different counselors and that. And Ms. Daniel said earlier that we have done a really, really good job along with our public health in communicating to people the importance of social distancing and wearing a mask. And that would, would council be in favor if we said that whoever's doing the next council update, urging people to put a mask on, the more we can get out there, the better? Where, would you be okay with that?
Yeah, well, of course, I think it's our job to urge them, but we, I don't think we should force them. But yes, I think that's a great idea to urge them to wear.
Looks like, Ms. Brooks.
Thank you. So I had my hand up for two reasons. One was before you spoke, Counselor Veho, but let me respond to what you just said. So we already did record Counselor Broyles, which is already set to air tomorrow at nine. So it's not going to be as strong, but we can definitely for next week's have that factored into the, the council video. And then Mayor, the reason I had raised my hand is because it, it seems like this discussion's kind of winding down. And I just want to make sure I'm kind of understanding where it seems council's landing. And so my impression is that maybe for the city to be doing more education, especially out to businesses and the, the community in general on the importance and need for wearing face masks, as well as our support for businesses who want to enforce wearing face masks within their business and any support we can provide there. And then I wasn't sure, did you want me to let county health know that you have been receiving phone calls? You've been receiving some of this just as partners, as, you know, we have the city and the county. And, and where council seems to be landing, but I could be wrong, is that if, if county health at, at any point wants to take that next step to get more serious, just to let us know. And so I just, I just want to check in on that. I want to make sure some of you aren't expecting us to do something and then we don't do it. Or we do do something and it comes as a surprise to somebody.
Okay, so let me see if I see any hands raised. I see.
Thank you, Mayor. So Heather, I wanted to say thank you for that. I really appreciate the clarification about how we will, if we move, like any movement that's going to happen. I really do think that it is, and that looks like Representative Valdez out there with his mask on, on Eric's screen.
Social distancing.
Yes. Hello, Representative Valdez.
Outside in the fresh air and I'm inside in the tight closed quarters.
Again, Eric, you can't be leading conversations in one way or another. No, I'm just kidding.
Nice.
It's not, it's not fair. Can't you use visual props?
Absolutely. We need to make sure our health and safety is, is number one in our communities and also in our homes and in our work areas and work environments. And as you probably have already heard from professionals and doctors and also our county health, it's, it's a huge issue and I don't want anybody to get sick. But yes, we need to make sure that our community are safe. And I, I do support the effort of wearing a mask. I hate to say it because sometimes I'm like, okay. But then at other times, you know, if we're, we're in the situation with the virus that it is, we need to make sure that health is, is number one priority and focusing on not only our community, but the, this economic crisis is, is hurting everybody across the board and I see it. And I'm, I'm here to help in any way possible. If we need to look at more care responding or more testing, let's do it. So I'm on board and let's go from there.
Okay, thank you.
How about that?
All right, back to council and let's see if we can wind this down.
So I just, I want to, I want to finish if that's okay. One of the first things that I had said to Heather earlier on in this was making sure that we support our businesses and that if they do want to require masks, that we let them know that we would, the city would be in support of that. And so if we can just ensure that they know that we'll, we'll help them and support them as they're going through this process and encouraging people to talk to their employers if they're not enforcing their mask rules. And really just providing some of that guidance and scaffolding in some ways to help support our community who are struggling, but really maybe even giving them some language about how to talk to your employer if you're concerned, what it will look like if you're a small business and want to enforce a mask rule and how, you know, just really giving some, some guidance there. Because I think that that can be, that can feel fearful to people and they can, they can wonder about what that's going to look like.
Great.
Hey, all righty. So Heather, do you have the information you need to move forward with next steps? Heather?
Yeah.
Ms. Brooks? She's muted.
And can we do?
I think one of the issues was whether council had a sense that it wanted to place a potential mask wearing ordinance on for the next meeting. And I, I'm not, I don't know whether that was really what Counselor Daniel was initially talking about.
No, I don't think that's, I don't think that's what she was talking about, but I'll let her speak for herself on that one.
The conversation has warranted us not putting that necessarily on the agenda, Eric. I don't think that that's, I think it's really what we've talked about is how we're going to support our businesses and doing that. And we can do that without an ordinance or follow public health's guidance. I think the council discussion has not warranted it being on the agenda as an ordinance possibility.
Okay, so let me just make sure I don't see any hands raised. I don't see any hands raised right now. So are we all in agreement with, with Counselor Swizo mentioned earlier?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right, so.
Need for executive session.
I believe we can move on to the executive session now. So let's go ahead and do that. I will accept a motion from someone who would like to make that motion.
Mayor, I move that we move into executive session pursuant to Colorado revised statute, section 24 dash 6 dash 402, 4B and 4E to receive advice from the city attorney concerning the city's opioid litigation and filing of a consolidated claim versus an individual claim in the Purdue bankruptcy.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any other further discussion?
One comment, Mayor, if I may. Do we go on to another Zoom area?
Yes, we're going to go to another Zoom area, Counsel Gregor. I'll let Ms. Martinez explain that real quick.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so you're just going to log off this webinar and you have the Zoom link for the executive session in your email.
Okay, and Heather just texted me that she's kicked off, off right now. So I'll just tell her to join us at 9:05 in the executive session. Is that okay with everybody?
Yes. Take the role. Take the role.
Okay, Counselor Broyles?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Carson? Counselor Carson?
Yes.
Counselor Gregor?
Yes.
Counselor Veho?
Yep.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, we will move into executive session at 9:05. No further business will be discussed.
I apologize, Eric. It's battery. My fault. But thank you.